Welcome to the Charlton Board of Selectmen meeting, January 24th, 2023. The time is 6:30 PM. If we could all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
This doesn't seem like a really long agenda. We have a few appointments, but we have to consent the warrant.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular minutes of January 10.
Okay, second?
Aye, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Appointments and resignations.
Announcements.
Oh. Alright.
Good to go? 2023 doug licenses are now available at the town's clerk's office or by mail or online at the town's website. And nomination papers are viable at the Charlton Town Clerk's Office starting February 6, 2023, and due back no later than March 17 by 5:00 PM. The list of seats is available on the town website. This is how it looks like. Town election, Saturday, May 6. Annual town meeting, Monday, May 15. Real estate and personal property bills due on February 1. If you haven't received your bill, please contact 508-248-2239. 2023 brush burning permits can now be purchased online. Check the Charlton Fire Department website or social media for details. For all employees, boards, and committees, the State Ethics Commission has updated the process for completing conflict of interest training. The town clerk's office will be following up with everyone about the more streamlined and easier-to-use online system from the state. Keep an eye out for an email. And from the Charlton Public Library, Garden Design: A Deeper Dive Presented by Joanne Pearson is Thursday, January 26 between 6:00 and 7:00 at Dexter Hall. Registration is required. What Makes a Great Garden: Join landscape architect and photographer Joanne Pearson to explore and dissect garden design and the hardscape and softscape elements that make a design shine. That's that.
Okay, and now we can move. Thank you, Basha, for that. Now we can move on to appointments and resignations.
Alright, the first is an appointment for a full-time police officer. There were 32 applications received to fill one of the three full-time police officer openings. Interviews were offered to 13 applicants. The recommendation to the board is to appoint Stephen Belrose as full-time police officer for the Charlton Police Department. Mr. Belrose has 20-plus years of experience in Massachusetts policing. He has served as a police officer, sergeant, and lieutenant with the Southbridge Police Department. He has a master's in criminal justice with a concentration in public administration and looks forward to coming to Charlton and positively engaging with our community. I'd recommend the board make the appointment as requested. His start date would be February 5, 2023. The additional two officers will be appointed at a future meeting pending onboarding requirements.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to appoint Officer Belrose and welcome Stephen.
Second question, is he currently with Southbridge or not anymore?
Currently.
He's working there tonight.
So he is.
He's what?
He's working there tonight.
In Charlton.
Oh, his start date?
February 12.
Cool.
That's cool.
My only comment on that is, is I was surprised when, you know, everything's social media, of course, everything's real and everything you see on the news. We had 32 applicants. That's, that's really cool. That's, that's.
That's Police Department of the State. Everybody wants to come here. And you know.
That's them, too.
Is that all Dan?
It's all, it's all Dan.
They're us!
So while we're sleeping, he's like.
Be honest, though, some of the applicants weren't qualified as others.
Yes.
So we kind of narrowed down, narrowed down, full-time academy, hardworking, full-time working. So we narrowed it down quite a bit.
How many full-time academy applied?
Probably about 15, 16.
That's still a lot.
That's still a lot better than what we were doing six months ago.
Yeah.
Wow.
People applied, they couldn't get released to come.
Wow, that's awesome.
Mr. Chairman, only one thing. Chief, once he does start, if you would, if you'd like to bring him in just so that the town can get to know who he is, outside of that, yeah. That's great. Welcome, like I said, welcome, Officer Belrose.
You mean, well, so we still have to take a vote on that. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Here's his aye. Unanimous.
Next would be an appointment for the Cultural Council. Attaches a talent bank form from William Arsonald seeking to be appointed to the Cultural Council. Cultural Council is recommending the appointment. Expiration date would be June 30, 2026.
So moved, and thank you, Ms. Arsonald.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? Pass.
Next is an appointment for the Economic Development Commission for the business owner non-resident position. Attaches a talent bank form from Karen Dyer seeking to be appointed to the Economic Development Commission as the business owner non-resident. Recommend the board make the appointment.
So moved, and thank you, Ms. Dyer.
Second.
I agree and welcome, and I've heard nothing but good things about her. She'll be an energetic person on the EDC.
I know her personally. She's in a Dudley Charlton Economic, Dudley Charlton Educational Foundation, too. Awesome person.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hearing none? Passes.
Finally, we have a resignation from the Culture, the Council on Aging Activities Assistant. Attaches a letter from Lori Connors resigning as Cultural, sorry, Council on Aging Activities Assistant effective January 26, 2023. The board should accept her resignation.
So moved with regret.
Yes, absolutely.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we are at.
Want to do some new business?
We're 10 minutes before the poll hearing, so yes.
Alright, so we'll go to the annual report. Attaches the board's 20, or draft of the board's 2022 annual report for consideration. Ask to review, approve, or make any recommended changes.
Chairman, look good to me, and I'm sure Mary had her hand in this, so thank you, Mary, if you're watching. Motion to approve as written.
Second.
The only thing that I read in that, and I'm not, and I'm sure Mary probably, is there really wasn't a an economic development Amazon factor in that. Because in my opinion, annual reports are something that go back and kind of benchmark where the town was and what they were thinking at that time.
I'm just trying to think, you know, just to, sorry, the other chair. The one thing was that most of the board's activity related to it was actually done in 2021 versus 2022, so.
Alright, wow. Yeah, you're right. Alright, okay. Stand corrected. Alright, thank you, Mary. So we have a motion and a second on that. Are we to approve that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have special alcoholic beverage license, two requests at the Overlook.
Attached are two special alcoholic beverage license applications submitted by the Overlook to be used at 88 Masonic Home Road on January 26, 2023, and February 16, 2023. The January 26 event is for a focus group engaging for their master planning initiative with community and business leaders. And their February 16 is for an awards dinner to recognize active retired firefighters and first responders for the town of Charlton. The application were, applications were forwarded to police chief, building commissioner, fire chief, and all have approved. Per the board's policy, you should approve the license for the day before the event and the day after.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the special alcohol, pardon me, special alcoholic beverages license submitted by the Overlook to be used on January 25 to the 27 from 8:30 AM to 10:00 AM and 4:30 PM to 6:00 PM to serve wine and malt beverages, and February 15 through the 17 from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM to serve all alcohol as noted in the, in the applications.
So the second one then?
Second, the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I hear none is approved.
Alright, next is for two appointment representatives to participate in the Bay Path Collective Bargaining. We are notified by Superintendent Brenner of Bay Path that per Mass General Law, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education requires that the town administrator or board chair of each of the 10 district towns participate in a process to choose the representative representative to represent the towns, all of the towns combined during the collective bargaining process in the case of a regional school district. I attended their meeting on January 18 along with the other districts and, of course, was chosen to represent the towns and accepted because I am a glutton for punishment. The board is asked to affirm this appointment by vote.
Andrew, thank you for, thank you for being a masochist. I am going to motion to affirm the appointment.
Yes.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Andrew, thank you very much. That's, that's. And our meeting, and just so that everybody knows at home, our meeting that was scheduled for tomorrow was postponed with Dudley Charlton Regional School District. And FinCon was postponed to February 1.
Yeah, next Wednesday.
February 1.
Yeah, I will let the board know as soon as I get any information on that.
We got five minutes. Is it possible to knock these out?
Mr. Chairman, what do you think about doing policy reviews? They seem pretty straightforward.
What's that?
What do you think about doing the number nine, the BOs policy review in five minutes?
Five minutes to call an appointment.
You guys are like Johnny on the spot. Yeah, okay. I'll do that.
Cool.
Alright, so enclosed for your review are the policies along with recommended changes for applications and petitions for public hearings, appointments and resignations by the Board, by the Board of Selectmen, authorized committees to spend funds, Board of Selectmen meetings, and the buy recycle policy.
So, Mr., Steve through you. So Andrew, on the first one, on the public hearings?
Yep.
So we're crossing out poll hearings, which is my favorite, and 61 removal. Is that just bookkeeping? Or do we no longer have to do public hearings on them?
Those are just bookkeeping.
Oh, cool. Alright, motion to approve.
There were what? What was the answer?
Yeah, it's just housekeeping for those.
Yeah, we, yeah, we're just crossing them out.
Okay.
But we're still doing public hearings on them.
Correct. So those, yeah, the, it's referencing the application form. If, it's basically the per MGL.
Yeah, that's what I figured, yeah.
That's pretty much what we're just advising.
The motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Expiration of appointments, resignations. Alright, so it looks like the, through you, Mr. Chair. The appointment's resignation again looks just more like a housekeeping. You know, so we're crossing out cable channels, saying social media, crossing on number four, et cetera. So I have no issues with this, but at least for discussion, motion to approve as submitted.
I have no motions. I have no problems with it either. Open for discussion? Anybody? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next one's unchanged, so motion to approve as submitted or. This is the authorized committees to spend funds.
There's no changes to any others.
No, just affirming.
Actually, you know what? If we're just affirming, I'm going to make a motion to affirm the authorized committee to spend funds, board of selectmen meeting policies, and buy recycle policy all, all at once unless the board objects.
I'll second that.
Second for discussion. Any discussion on that?
No changes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing none?
You still got time to kill, Mr. Chair.
We have about 30 seconds.
Dan, you want to come up?
Once you read the public hearing, then you'll be right on time.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Alright, so 6:45 poll hearing for Lelandville Road. Attached will find a request from Massachusetts Electric Company, DBA National Grid, and Verizon New England requesting permission to install two join-home polls on Lelandville Road. Also attached is a notice that was sent to the Butters. This request has been forwarded and approved by both the police chief and DPW superintendent. No comments or concerns have been received. Chairman should open the public hearing by reading the notice as sent to a Butters. We did hear from National Grid, who said that unfortunately, they didn't have anybody who could attend this meeting to represent because they're still dealing with power outages up north. The property owner came in earlier today and basically said if needed, he could be here, but I think that it's pretty straightforward, so I'll defer to the chair to open the public hearing.
So we're opening, oh, opening the public hearing. I forgot to find that. The. Notice the public hearing, which is on that page. The Charlton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January 24, 2023 at 6:45 PM in the Selectmen's Meeting Room 1, 37 Main Street, Charlton, Mass via Zoom webinar. Passcode, they're all on that list. To attach a request from Mass Electric, DBA National Grid, and Verizon New England, it's on, this poll replacement is on Lelandville Road. National Grid shall install two JO polls on Lelandville Road beginning at a point approximately 740 feet northwest of the centerline and the intersection of Potter Villa Road. Continuing approximately 220 feet in a northwest direction, install a new pole number 18 with an anchor roughly 110 feet north of existing pole number 19 on the same side of the road. Then install a new pole number 17 with an anchor roughly 110 feet north of the new pole number 18 on the opposite side of the road. They're also asking for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connection with such poles and buildings as each of the petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. Annual wishes to be heard on this matter should appear on the date and time specified via Zoom or submit any concerns. So do we have anyone in queue that's concerned about this or has?
Anything you want to say, Dan?
I don't see anybody.
If you're online, just raise your hand if you want to. Say no one. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the poll petition.
Second motion.
So that's, but that's two votes, so now we have to vote on closing the public hearing and then voting on?
Correct. I'm sorry, I thought we just voted to close the public hearing.
We did.
All in favor of closing the public hearing? Aye.
Aye.
And then all in favor, alright.
Yeah, so, and just to, yeah, just to be officious, I'll make, so my motion is to, is to approve the poll petition.
Second.
Okay, and that brings.
Sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I think that we need to formally vote on that one.
What's that?
I think that we need to, that we need to formally vote on, to, to, to approve the petition. I, I made the motion, Patsy made the second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Thank you.
Hearing none? Approved.
How are we doing? Ah, we got two minutes.
Two minutes for.
Just too darn efficient.
Is there anyone here for that, though?
We're talking about the chapter 61?
Yeah.
Removal?
Actually, you can probably start reading it by the time we get there.
Alright, sounds good. Alright. Request to remove chapter 61 from Iris Jennings. Attaches a request from Donald J. O'Neill, counselor, counselor-at-law on behalf of Iris Jennings to convert for other, for other use 8.28 acres of land located on Brookfield Road, map 15-B-4 and 15-B-4.2. The Planning Board, Board of Assessors, Conservation Commission, and Water Sewer Commission have all reviewed the request and have no objection to the town of Charlton choosing not to exercise their right of first refusal for this request. The chairman should open the public hearing by reading the attached public hearing notes. I recommend the board approve the request.
So now we need to, we need to open the public hearing and read the hearing notes. Please be advised that the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January 24, 2023 at 6:50 PM at the Charlton Town Hall Selectmen's Meeting Room Number 1, 37 Main Street, Charlton, Mass, 01507 via Zoom, passcode. To act on a request by attorney Donald O'Neill on behalf of Iris Jennings, 221 Brookfield Road, Charlton, Mass, who intends to convert for other use a portion of vacant land located at, on Brookfield Road, Charlton, Mass, as shown on Assessors' map, numbers 15B4 and 15B4.2. The portion of the covered to other use contains 8.28 acres of land as recorded in the Worcester District Registry of Deeds Plan Book 967 Plan 87. Anyone interested should appear at this date as specified or submit concerns in writing. Do we have either?
Seeing no comment from Chair.
Cool. Mr. Chairman, I'd make a, unless someone runs at the last second, make a motion to close the public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed here? Hearing none?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the board not exercise our right of first refusal for this request.
I second that motion.
Yep. All in favor of that?
Aye.
So approved. Now we are. We're rolling around through this.
Do we, Mr. Chairman, do we have any old business? No, they could do.
We've got the student slot person report. Do we want to jump to that?
This is the student representative report from Shepherd Hill, January 24, 2022. Today was the second day of the second semester, though the first day hardly counted because we were only there for four hours, meaning all assignments attached to the first semester concluded on Friday. Teachers are required to enter in their grades by Wednesday, so anyone with any work left to make up should do so with haste. Grades for the first semester will be posted to the School Brain's parent portal on Friday, January 28, and the third quarter will extend until Friday, March 31. Additionally, Thursday, February 9 will be an early release day exclusively for students in preschool through grade four. Parents with children in those grades should also note that parent-teacher conferences for that age group will be held on that day. The Super Bowl grinder fundraisers mentioned in the previous report for students attending the 2023 Global Awareness Trip to Spain, Portugal, and Gibraltar is ongoing, with all order forms to be returned by Monday, January 30. Ham, Italian, turkey, and roast beef grinders are all available at $8 each, and I happen to have the order forms on me right now, if anyone's interested.
I bet you do.
February driver education class at Shepherd Hill still has a few open slots left. At the time of writing this, they may have been filled by now. Direct all registration requests or other concerns to the Shepherd Hill Drivers Ed website or, website, 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 or Mr. Scott Provost. The 2023 Central Massachusetts Show Choir Fest is being hosted by Shepherd Hill Regional High School and will be held on the first weekend in February, the 3rd and 4th.
Cool.
Very good. Motion to accept.
Thanks, Eric.
Nice job, man. Good job.
I appreciate that.
Good job. Motion to accept this report. Do we have to accept that?
Eric, good job.
What is, so we are now at?
TA reporter, I think that's true.
What's that?
I think we're the TA reporter from reading.
We're the what?
The TA report.
Andrew, sorry.
Yeah, because, well, because, because, you know, there's goals and objectives are really.
Yeah, that's just continuing.
Those are ten, those are.
Yeah, I probably recommend just removing that agenda item, just so for, but that's just me.
Yeah.
No problem.
We'll bring it up, we'll bring it up when we need to, but if, but if it doesn't, I agree with that.
Alright, so as far as my report, I just outlined some of the business outreach activities that we're going to be looking at the next year. So I did have an opportunity to meet with the Trump Business Networking Group last month. Thank you, Basha, for getting me involved, or for connecting me with that group. They'd meet Tuesdays, Tuesday mornings here at Town Hall. We discussed some ways that the town could work, or the group could work with the town to support the community overall, and one point of discussion that came up during that meeting was some town branding and signage at points of entry around town, so I'll continue to work with them as far, as far as ways we can make that work and potentially bring something back to this board for action. Also, last week, I was able to meet with Treehouse Brewing and their management team to discuss ways that the town could be of better assistance to them and the overall business community, so hopefully continuing those conversations. And then over the next few months, we'll be working with the EDC to present before the Central Mass Realtors Association and Chamber of South Central Mass on opportunities here in Charlton for business groups. So really just, I wanted to kind of put it out there to welcome any opportunities from anybody out there to meet with, continue discussion with local businesses on how the town can help foster growth here. You know, we want to, we know that Amazon's coming to town, so we have that big business, but we want to make sure we keep our sights focused on growing small businesses that start here.
That's awesome.
Main Street sidewalks, so on Wednesday, or last Wednesday, Randy and Jerry and I met with representatives from McClure Engineering to start reviewing some of the preliminary plans on the Phase 1 of renovations to the sidewalk network around Main Street. They took some of the comments and incorporating those into the plans. So in the coming weeks, we're hoping to use the updated plans and schedule a series of outreach meetings to some of the property owners around, around the Main Street area and with the goal that we incorporate any of the feedback that we get from the town into the plan and then, you know, obtain any easements that are necessary to get these new sidewalks up and running, so that way we can look at a potential construction during the summer of 2024.
Nice.
Fire stations, fire substation, we did receive three proposals from architects to conduct feasibility on the development of a substation in front of the middle school campus. The group, the substation committee is in the process of reviewing proposals, and once they select a preferred firm, we'll begin negotiations for cost based on the scope of work. Sewer overflow notifications, so in response to a mandate from the Mass DEP, we now provide an opt-in community notification program specific to sanitary sewer flow, sewer overflow events. These are not very common, but it's required by Mass DEP that you have a outlet specific for this, and you can't just put it under general emergency notifications. So those who would like to receive notification, receive these notifications, there is a link provided on the homepage of the town website to opt into those. The MMA Conference, just came back from that this weekend. That was both Friday and Saturday, first one in about three years. They had a great lineup of workshops and presentations. But, you know, I was able to sit on programs that discuss challenges in developing regional programs, some projections on state revenues, and challenges dealing with unaccepted roads. So I know those are all kinds of things that we deal with here. So appreciate the board's support in attending this conference, and maybe next year, if you guys want to come, be happy to join you.
Yeah, thank you again for being a masochist. I will take a pass.
No, that was, no, Andrew, thank you for going to that. I know that's, that's time, that's your downtime. Good report. So now we're on to other business unknown at time of posting?
I got nothing.
Anyone got anything? Next meeting announcement, we are looking at potentially February 7 and maybe the, well, maybe the 7th and the 28th for sure. We meet with the school committee, 7:00 PM on February.
That'll be February 1st.
It's February 1st, not the 14th. Yeah, so it's February 1st. If there's nothing else, I think we're ready for executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we enter into executive session under MGL Chapter 38, Section 21A, Number 3, Discuss Strategy with respect to Collective Bargaining or Litigation, LNG. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, the chair so declares and reconvened to open session for any other business if needed and to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor and roll call? Yep, roll call.
Basha?
Aye.
Kathy?
Patsy?
Aye.
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Aye. Chair's his aye.
Thanks, Eric.
We are now in executive session.
See you, Chief.
Have a good night.
Thanks, Drew.